We need to order. Larry, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the brother of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
Okay. If we could, Liz, could we have roll call, please?
Bryce, here. Hayden?
Present.
MacArthur?
Here.
McAvinci?
Well done.
Nivell, here. Olson, here. Kalson?
Present.
Okay, in your packet tonight is the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I make a motion to be agenda.
I'll second it.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approve the agenda as written. Also in your packet tonight is the approval of the minutes from April 3, 2018, Plan and Commission meeting. Does anybody have any comments on it or corrections?
Do you see, I thought I had a couple here, but I do see one that I had seen under items from commissioners. The last item from commissioners, Commissioner Hayden indicated at that. Probably that's an extra A.T. there now.
There's one little typo in the chairperson comments up there. Keep the second line. An "of" instead of an "of."
Oh, yeah, that one too. That's the other one I saw.
I heard you must.
Anybody else know any corrections?
Anything else? Not? We have a motion to...
I don't think we do that.
Second to...
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as corrected.
I'll second.
There you go.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I just want to point out to the rest of you that Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman Lee?
Yes.
Just want to let you know I'm gonna take off at 8:00 o'clock tonight regardless of where we're at.
Okay.
Have another thing to go to here.
All right. Any public comments? No public comments.
Sure person.
Public here though.
Yes.
Okay, sure, I have nothing at this point to comment on. I was hoping to be able to watch on YouTube the last meeting, but I, I don't know, OTV, I couldn't find it. I searched on the web for it, but it wasn't, wasn't out there to watch.
Their editor, their editing machine broke down?
Oh.
And it'll be a couple of weeks before they can have a new one there. So if anybody wants a DVD, I can get a copy of the DVD.
Okay. All right, that was the only issue I had there. Any comments, subcommittee updates from our commissioners?
When do you want us to have comments on whether, regardless of their subcommittee?
I didn't hear you.
When do you want us to be able to make comments, address comments, commissioner comments? That's just saying, subcommittees only?
It's actually for any.
Or can we do comments now as well?
Uh, you can do comments now?
Okay, I didn't know if you just wanted to keep that as subcommittees, that's why.
Why don't you start, Tony?
It does not have to be, let's say comments.
Okay, it seems we don't have a subcommittee report at the moment, so I would like to make note that since it is now springtime, I have noticed there are many people that are starting to burn leaves and such within the village. Unfortunately, I've noticed that on at least three occasions, the fires were leaf fires that were quite smoky and they were on days that were not burning days according to the township permit. So I wanted to bring this to the attention of the village manager. Is there anything we can do to try to make our residents aware that A, they need to have a burning permit from the fire department, and B, that they are aware of the schedule of permitted burning days? Because it's frustrating, you go to hang laundry out and all of a sudden somebody starts a big smoky fire and it's not supposed to be a burning day. It's like, ah!
Can we put their schedule on our website?
Um, I don't have it in front of me, but April and October is different because of that. Everybody needs to burn their spring.
Yes, but they were burning on a Monday and a Friday.
Right, and I believe April and October it's by...
Tuesdays and Thursdays and every weekend.
Every weekend, right.
And it's, I think it's only every second Tuesday and Thursday.
Every, yes.
And then every weekend.
It's correct right now. It skips a week where there's no...
Yes.
I made that thing. But absolutely getting it out is important, but the public needs to know that when you see that and your neighbor's burning and it's bothering you or has any issue with it, calling up down to the department, they'll come out. They absolutely will come out and make them put it out. And if they don't do it, they'll ticket them, so.
Will they, will the person who called them be kept confidential?
Yep.
Because I think that's one of the reasons people may not call. They're afraid their neighbors are gonna say, well, who called? And they'll say, well, so-and-so did, and then, you know, you end up with a...
They are until, unless it gets to the point of going to court.
Wouldn't the first step be to knock on your neighbor's door, give them a call and ask them to please not? I mean, before you bother the fire department, you would kind of handle that on your own.
But there is issues when, I can tell you from experience, going to see your neighbor and tell them that's a problem, they already skipped over the permit in the first place.
I'm just thinking that, is there a way we can take a proactive approach as opposed to a reactive approach?
You're absolutely right.
Let's try to see if we can inform people a little better upfront first. If there's still issues, then, you know, people are still free to report it to the fire department and then have the fire department respond.
So, add in the paper with the schedule and say, please follow this. If you don't have your permit, go get it, that kind of thing. And the other thing is, in the U.S. Forest Service, we take opportunities like that for practice. We go and start up the pump motor and just douse things.
And we've done that.
You guys probably do that too.
Well, yeah, and we've done that too, but we don't do that until it gets to a point where the person is being belligerent or, but if we're going to that point, then a ticket arrives also. If they don't, a lot of times they'll just let them, you know, don't put the mower on, let it burn out, or ask them to, if it's too large, ask them to put it out. So they're generally, as a rule, as long as the person's agreeable and not obstinate at all, there's no big issue. But no, getting it, getting something out there, and I have no problem stopping in there and seeing the fire chief to let him know that there's a concern. I, and, you know, the ball's in their court to make the public aware of it, not necessarily ours. I mean, it's, that's their job, and I don't mind telling them that.
Well, I know the link is on the township to the fire department to get your permit online, the link is not on ours. That might be something to add.
Well, at least the calendar, because we went to get a permit and we didn't pay for anything. They just gave us a payment.
No, what you can just do it online. You just have online and get the permit, you're done in two seconds.
Yeah, link to the permit includes also, they also have the schedule.
Does it include this?
And you have to pass a test.
That's all you need to do.
And how you get it on, you gotta pass the test.
It's a really, what, three questions?
It is, it's in depth.
It's really relatively simple to test.
But it also covers some things like, you have to be 50 feet away from a structure, no accelerants.
Hopefully it's just to ensure that the person actually looked at the rules.
Yes.
Is, if they know the test is coming, they'll look at the rules to make sure they do it. Is, is what the assumption is for that. Which is a good deal, getting it online was, was a big deal for them. It cost them money and a good deal. Because now that saves a lot of people coming into the, driving and...
Right, and taking up time, and yeah.
How many people here knew that today was a red flag day?
They said it on the radio.
Yeah, over and over and over on TV, yeah.
They burned off 25 acres up ahead of the hills yesterday. They say they burned off.
Was it, how many acres?
I'm torn 25.
Okay, I heard on the radio 28, and all they kept saying was, um, north, up north, 28, up north. And they never would say Ortonville. I'm thinking, up north, why do they, yeah, we're here.
It was actually Hadley, right.
Yeah, but they never would say where, so I didn't think, I don't think they knew where on the radio, but...
It was up north.
They never would match where.
It was up north.
It was up Ortonville.
Okay, so can we get that added on?
Yeah, we'll put a, we'll put a thing on the website.
I can have a Facebook page too. I can let them know, at least that, you know, you need to get your permit through the fire department and there's a schedule to follow. Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Larry?
That was it for me.
Anybody else?
I just, I just have a question. What is the subcommittee?
Well, we have like, for example, we have a subcommittee that works five on the chicken ordinance, okay. I just point out in case there were some subcommittees, just as a general rule.
Okay, so I mean, there isn't any, there's none at this time?
We have nothing at this point as a subcommittee.
Okay, no, that's for curious stuff.
Now, Lee, we probably will have one very soon for the capital improvement.
Right.
Oh, there's, yeah, I hope we're splitting that up in all kinds of sections to have subcommittees, because that's kind of what Mike was saying.
So I have a question to Tanya. Is there any further progress on the chicken ordinance? Is it approved? Is it gonna go into effect or anything?
It was approved by a four to three vote. It was posted in the paper, and the letters...
Letters will probably go out this week to the permit is, I did the permit, made up the permit. The permit's effective Friday is when the ordinance takes effect. This Friday, the 30th days will be up. Will be, no fee for the permit. It's an administrative review by myself or someone from my staff. Bill and I got together and talked about it and couldn't see any need for a full-blown site review and all that, you know, because it's fairly easy. If I, I think I can read a hundred-foot tape measure pretty easy, you know, and we'll go out, we'll mail out to the folks who, matter of fact, someone's already came in and got one. And turned it back in, so I gotta get out there and go check it out. And then we're gonna mail out to the folks who've got the original letters. We'll mail out to them a copy of the ordinance and a copy of the permit so that they can get that done. And so we'll work with them and go do the inspections and go from there.
I know, I've seen it on Facebook. I forget who the individual, it doesn't make no difference, but posted on there for current conversation with you and how that was gonna be managed. And I commend you, that was about the way, the best way things to be handled that I've seen in a while, of letting somebody know that there's, you know, there's some compassion of how long it's gonna be, what it's gonna take, you know, to get yourself back. I, and that's not always the norm when they do an ordinance like that. And I thought that was pretty cool.
So there's, at this point, there's probably no opportunity to change anything in there in the ordinance? Like, for instance, well, there's all kinds of changes we would have made, but like giving a kind of, well, what would you call, allowing people to keep the current chickens they have if they have more than four? Until, and let, let time take its toll and are using the...
I think, I think there's more of a, let's, let's see how this thing goes forward and let's implement the ordinance and then we'll go from there. There's an old saying, I, the, you know, the village manager or city manager, whatever you wanna say, they don't write to it, they dance to it. So we'll, we'll make sure that we, we implement this as smooth as possible, and if there's changes down the road, they, you know, there's always a process for doing that, so.
So I know of at least one that they have considerably more chickens than four, and they're way closer than 100 feet to the nearest neighboring building. So that's gonna just eliminate them right off the bat.
I don't know, I'll have to take every case individually and take a look at every case individually.
Well, I recall at the meeting when that was passed, that Wayne had brought out information that there is some way to appeal that at the state level and get some kind of an exemption, so.
And they won't touch it because of the ordinance trouble. They wouldn't touch it before an ordinance was into effect, and because the ordinance is so controversial, they will not touch it. They don't want to get in the middle of a lawsuit.
The state?
They denied it because of the controversy.
Okay.
The state is working on their bills, the Senate, and so they're just gonna let that go into effect and take over and do its thing. So in the meantime, as you say, we dance.
So we got ours for now, and down the road, the state will say, okay, this is the new rules, and then they'll have to abide by that.
Like they had in effect.
Right, right, yeah.
So we just protect their babies and we're done.
Anybody else?
Yes. Are you done, Bob?
I have, no, I have any questions.
Oh, okay.
About some trees.
Go ahead.
Well, I have, I have three things. First, the survey on the property, I know it supposedly was done, but where are the stakes at?
That's a good question. We've had a call out for him for the last couple of days. He was supposed to call me last Friday, and we called him yesterday, and his wife was gonna return the call, so I expected to have the report and that last Friday, so I need to talk to the gentleman and have a...
Did he put a stake up anywhere?
Yes. Yes, I know he's put, I, God, I don't know. I'd have to...
But, but how do you know then? Because I want a lot of this.
I have a stake up that I'm wandering back there.
He allegedly told me.
There's no stakes. I haven't seen any stakes anywhere.
Yeah, I haven't either. I've been out there too.
Part of the job. I mean, you won't get paid, and, you know, if he doesn't do what's required, he won't get paid.
Well, I just want to make sure that you were aware of that too.
Yep, no, I have told him twice now to stop by the office, and we need to go for a walk and make sure he did the job appropriately.
Yeah, right on, okay, good.
And I, you know, I don't pay people who don't do the job.
So I assume we are expecting stakes that are like high and visible, and not just a surveyor's stake pegging the ground that you can't see?
Right.
Either would have been good.
You've still gotta find the stake in the ground though.
Yeah, but he should have been doing that.
The quote, there was multiple stakes along the lines.
Correct. According to?
The quote.
Right, the quote.
It's not just the corners, it's multiple stakes, that's what there will be.
And there's no way that he would go and survey everything and then think of going back and putting lates stakes in afterwards? I mean, that would be a complete waste of time. He would put them in as he goes along.
Correct.
They should be there if it's done already.
All right, because you're on it though, as long as you know what's happening out there. And then the other thing I had brought up to Lee, I went to the village meeting, and there are two things actually. And there was a lot of like tractor replacement with the John Deere, there's a broom they're selling, there's a scrap tire grant, water softener was purchased, a lot of things that are, should be in the CIP. So I'm hoping somehow that they can start communicating with us regarding, especially the bigger, because what was the tractor, 27?
23,000.
23,000. So those items will eventually affect what we're doing here with the master plan with the CIP, correct? At least the way I learned it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, for something to go into the CIP, like the water softener for the old mill, that would not go into CIP. It doesn't reach the $5,000 threshold. The selling of the old broom would not be in the CIP from the tractor because it was a tractor and...
But the scrap, the scrap schoolhouse tire grant and the tractor?
Scrap tire grant is the one that was approved last year. It's the, it's the Schoolhouse Cedar Street one. So yeah, that, that will go in the CIP, but the contracts for that were already signed before.
Yeah, because that was 14...
I think if you look in the kind of rough draft CIP of the stuff that I know, our needs are percolating kind of type thing that I sent out, I think that's in there.
Okay, I just want to, because it's gonna be strange when we go to a meeting and receive that information after the fact. And the big thing is on communication, so I think that would be a healthy way to start. But I just want to, and Lee was aware of it, so he knows to keep on track of the CIP stuff. And then the other comment, I wanted you guys to watch the meeting, but it didn't get out there. There were issues with editing or something. But the council is very, very concerned with how this process is happening. Councilperson Ashman's actually made comments that he feels that the council is totally being blindsided, that we are not being transparent, that they should be part of everything, although he didn't make last meeting, so I don't know where he was. But he thinks that each step should be approved by council, everything that we do. Every step should have to go in front of council. Batsu feels the same way. He didn't understand why they didn't get to approve the survey before it went out. They feel that they should have, that should have come before them, and they should have approved that before it went out. Over the other comments. Just basically that they don't trust our methods, they really don't trust McKenna, and we're not, we have a lack of transparency, and all of them commented except for you, Tanya, that how we should have people involved, and we should have the residents involved, and how dare we for not basically having taxpayers and residents involved as part of this. But no one mentioned to them up there that we haven't even started yet. We were just now combining, and this is important because it's being taped, we're just now combining all of our stakeholders. So we haven't done anything yet other than reach out to the most important people, and that was the residents. We sent a survey to them immediately. That was our first step. So we reached out to them immediately. But I just want people to know out there that please don't understand that that village meeting, that that's what we have done, or the lack thereof, or what we haven't done, or we haven't even started yet. We're just now getting our list together, and they're gonna walk us through this process. So this will be good. I know they've mentioned train wreck several times at the meeting, and I don't believe it's gonna be, I believe we're gonna do a fantastic job, and I hope that, that public will trust us to do so.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Can I ask a quick question? Has anybody ever told the council they cannot come to our meetings?
Quite the contrary. At the council meeting, I explicitly said, you are welcome to come to any of our meetings. We made that clear a couple of council meetings.
So did Tanya that night too.
So it's, it's not that we don't welcome them, they just choose not to show up.
It is interesting that one of the people who made...
Am I just making sure I'm seeing this right?
Yes, it is interesting that one of the people who's expressly concerned about the lack of communication failed to show up at the last joint meeting with the planning commission, DDA, and council.
And then I do want to say, because I wanted to thank you for this, when they mentioned that someone should be coming, why isn't anyone coming to their meetings and telling them step by step what we're doing? Tanya did say, I'm here, because she is our representative, and that's why she's there. So thank you.
Okay, let's move, we're gonna move on. We're gonna go to new business. Plant and Commission review Marsh Auto Project.
The, our representative of Marsh is here. The original contact with them was that they wanted to put up a barrier on the east end of their front row of parking, sales area, whereby to stop, I believe they had some vehicles stolen off the property. The way they get off the property from their site is going across that part onto the neighbor's
Property.
Lawn, property, and then exiting their driveway back on M-15. So the...
Ken's Cove Island?
Uh, Pennzoil.
Yeah, Pennzoil's right next door, I believe. So what I did include, or was included in your packet, was an overhead photograph of the area. The original drawing that was submitted indicated that they want to put this, well, I guess for lack of a better term, to me, it's a guardrail, but it started out maybe as a fence or whatever it is. And then the applicant, I don't think was totally aware of where their property line was, so we included a copy of overhead, or I have one here we can pass around too, but their property line...
Is it this guy?
Yeah, the property line actually runs right across where that asphalt ends for the parking. If you'll see, there's also a telephone pole there. The property line runs between the poles on that property and ends right at that driveway. So the original drawing, I think that was submitted to you, where they want to put this was a bit erroneous. Where they do want to put it is at that property line.
That's actually...
Now, part of the reason this is coming to you tonight was a decision on the village managers, my part, relative to the site was actually developed under a 2004 site plan. And that site plan showed no barrier at the end of that, and that actually pursuant to most planning issues, you'll notice the drive goes all the way to the end of the property. This, there's a similar situation going on the township now, where if property gets developed along M-15, it's always appropriate to have off-road access between properties. So you'll see that the Genesis Credit Union that got put in, they have a stubbed-off driveway. Taco Bell has submitted a site plan and got a preliminary plan review. They're gonna continue that access drive across Taco Bell's property. If you've ever spent any time down in West Bloomfield and a number of other areas, their, their roads, all their properties, commercial properties along a major thoroughfare, you can actually go from one property to the next without having to go out on the road and come back. What it does is it decongests that major thoroughfare. Well, anybody that's been on M-15 at 7:15 in the morning, or going southbound, or at anywhere from 3:30 to 6:00 at night, you don't want them out there playing around. There's not enough room for the people that do have to use that property. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because at the end is where they want to put up the rails. So I wanted to make sure that the planning commission understood that, and also what is being proposed. I had proposed, and this is after Bill and I had discussion, that maybe there was a way to do it through landscaping. But the applicant has said he's checked into that, and that's quite expensive, although I don't know what exactly that means, but, and then I was asked one other question relative to this site that Sims, when this site was developed, Sims was in there, and then Lanes went in there. And the question that was posed to me was, why is this railing needed now when it's been a car sales place for the last 14 years and nobody had any issues? So I don't know if there's a different way that they can secure their lot, just short of putting in the guardrail. But even so, he did apply for it. He has submitted the picture of what they wish to install. However, it is your purview to either accept it, modify it, or reject it. So, because it is part of a previously approved site plan, so basically what you'd be doing is modifying the approval from back in 2004. So...
So is, this isn't a variance situation then, is it?
No, not at all.
I mean, this is, this, what he's asking would be in compliance with how he could have developed the property originally, if he had wanted to specify that originally that way?
Yes.
Okay.
In other words, the, if you want to call it a fence, the fence ordinance doesn't address it. So, and the rest of it is, becomes an aesthetical issue.
Yeah, and I can...
I think if it was addressed, if it was brought to the...
Do they have existing gates across here to block that when there...
You have it across your main driveway.
Yeah, across the main, yes, I do. Okay, so the main thing is that there's...
Gates, gates, not a, not a guardrail.
I know, I know. Let me, let me just, let me just finish my thought here. So at this end, the main, your main concern is that, okay, if we did have other businesses developed, is to allow that traffic flow. This is a little different type of situation than many businesses because of the fact that their inventory is cars sitting out on the lot, and in order to secure those, protect them, you do have to somehow block access to that. If we, if you wanted to consider that, instead of like a guardrail the whole way, I suppose that... I suppose that they could have like a gated section across at the guardrail. If we, if we wanted to include some kind of possibility for the future for expansion.
Yes, that's, that's, so that's what I'm saying.
Can I interject? Okay. I can see from a security standpoint, possibly insurance standpoint, that that secured property, if they're selling vehicles, and, you know, how many times you hear about people cutting catalytic converters off the vehicles at car dealers? I mean, maybe it affects them from an insurance standpoint. Hey, if you barrier your whole sales, car sales place, may affect the insurance cost. I don't, I, to me it makes sense.
Can we ask?
I would say, I would say a couple of things.
Yeah, that would be great, okay.
So as far as like for how our insurance was when we were selling Holly, because we were in Holly for four years. So I mean, when we did our insurance there, they wanted us to put up like yellow posts around our whole building, which we ended up not doing. We put up, you know, we had a couple of rocks laying around the yard that we could put up and it blocked them enough to where you couldn't get off the lot on the grass. However, when you go over onto like Pennzoil's side where our property lines meet up, they went, from the two instances that we had a couple of months ago, we had two trucks that were, you know, around $10,000 range stolen off the lot, hotwired and just driven right off. So they go over, there's like wood sitting right there right now, it doesn't really do anything. They drove off through the ditch and then, you know, got on that M-15 and took off down the road. Thank God they were both recovered, so it wasn't too big of an issue, but it still, you know, costs us money obviously to get it on impound and stuff like that. Plus, if we would have had to make the insurance claim, it would have cost us a lot more than that. As far as the guardrail, I put a black and white picture in there. I did get kind of like a better picture as far as what we would want to put in there. I don't know if you guys want to pass that around to see what-
Oh, okay, yeah, this is a little different.
I would say it's not, you know, your typical, you know, guardrail that's going to go out there and rust and look bad from the road. You know, that's not what we want, obviously, you want our vehicles to look good as well as everybody driving by. So we want it to look good, you know, stainless steel, it's not going to rust out and, you know, look bad from the road either. But for us to secure our vehicles, which if, you know, if it did come down to it and you had to put a gate in between them, I mean, really all it is is just, you know, it's a stainless guardrail that goes around the lot where if somebody were to drive into it, they're not going to get the vehicle through.
So is that going out here, is that?
Yeah.
Am I reading this wrong?
So the wall-
So what, that right there would be here or here?
The wall ends right here. So it would actually start just on the, like right on the end of that wall, continue down to the end of the property line and then straight to the property line to the trees.
Would this make a difference if you put something in like this for insurance or no? Does it, doesn't affect your insurance one way or another?
It doesn't affect our insurance at the moment. But like I said, when we had previously, we just switched insurance companies, so that would make a difference obviously with that versus the last one that we were with. But if it ever, you know, came to where we changed it, it definitely could help us, you know, to get that lowered. But, I mean, the main thing is trying to protect our inventory and not have it.
Correct.
Yeah. Sit, sit there with the camera and go through and try and find out who's still getting away.
Bill's comment was why all of a sudden now is it needed? Is this like the first issues we're having, that things have been stolen, or?
Other dealerships there have had security.
Is that, is that what made the difference?
There was a security vehicle there.
I would say, which we do have now, actually.
You do?
I did hire somebody to sit out there.
Those hundred one out, too.
Because I know something, why do they have a security vehicle?
Now we know.
Now we know.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, because we had talked to Lain, they had had a couple of similar issues and it's mainly with the older Fords.
Oh, yeah.
Because you don't have-
Those tailgates, yeah.
Well, I was going to say, they don't have as, like upgraded as security, so I mean, they're very easy to get off and that's where they run in most issues with, but they're also work a lot.
How probably there's, you know, it won't be a problem because they won't be-
I was going to say, it may not be an issue, but I mean, I do sell, you know, obviously from anywhere from, you know, '98 to, you know, 2013 vehicles too, so.
Now, considering what Bill was saying about, you know, about a lot of businesses connect one to the next to the next, would you be willing to consider like having a gate at that section so that if that did happen in the future?
If it did come down to that, I mean, I don't see why that would be an issue just because it's still going to be locked up.
I mean, obviously until there is something more, it would just stay closed all the time.
Right, yeah, we would just do the-
At least there's a possibility that-
Of opening it?
You could open it up and-
Right, and which if it came down to it, you know, I'd like to run the, just the normal guardrail through right now, but if it came down to it where, you know, we had to make that adjustment, obviously we would, you know.
Because this is a planning commission issue and needs planning commission approval. There's, there's a couple of things. One is you can approve it as applied for. You can reject it in its entirety, or you can condition it. Put conditions on it. In other words, you approve, let's say you want to approve this guardrail, but you could approve it with the condition that if the property to the self was ever developed in a different way, that they would have to remove that section to allow, or put gates in to allow-
The flow of traffic.
Vehicles traverse that way. That would be a condition of that approval.
What do you think about that?
I don't have any issues with that.
Okay.
So I, I think what's really good about what I just saw in the picture, and that's the first time I saw it.
Oh, yeah, that looks better, yeah.
A much better rail. And the other thing I saw in that picture that I think would be who of the planning commission to talk to the applicant about is the greenery underneath it, the little bit of landscaping. Not a lot, but there's a little bit of landscaping underneath it. It looks like there's some ground cover in there that will add some color to it, so it isn't just some big ugly guardrail.
Did you have ideas for landscaping, or was that?
The main thing, that was just to get like a better picture, obviously, what it's going to be, so it doesn't look-
Right, did you have some ideas of your-
The main thing that we were going to do, I mean, the part that runs along the line with us and Pennzoil, obviously that's just going to be grass. I mean, I don't, you know, nobody's really going to pay attention to that too much from the road. I mean, if we had to do some, you know, throw some mulch down and stuff like that to dress it up a little bit at the road there, I don't see why that would be a problem. I mean, that, you know, the main thing, we priced out rocks to do that. I mean, I did explore other options, putting trees or rocks in. Trees are expensive, rocks are even more expensive. So that, you know, we, we started-
Some kind of low level shrub, you know, that doesn't get very tall and just help that. And I like the idea with the condition, because you don't, absolutely do not want traffic going over there. Think they're going to go over to Pennzoil and go back out to M-15. But, but with a condition in there that in the, in the event that that business changes and-
I like that, too.
Well, I had a question thinking Bob could answer. In a safety aspect, in a fire aspect, to have a gate put on already, is that any benefit? Versus putting a condition in, if there was just a gate at that one area? No difference?
No, not a benefit. Actually, I believe that building's suppressed, or at least a good portion of it's suppressed anyway, so.
So Bill, what in your opinion would be the likelihood that Pennzoil at some point would pave over their lawn to connect those two businesses?
I, I think the likelihood of Pennzoil doing it is-
That's what you said.
I would say the likelihood of Pennzoil doing it, zero.
But the point is, what's the likelihood of Pennzoil always being there?
Correct.
I don't know.
Maybe.
They've been there a long time.
Yeah, trust me, in my 40 years at doing this thing, I saw a three-year-old Buschamis building get tore down to put a McDonald's building up. Three years old, they leveled it. And McDonald's went and built their own building.
Never say never.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, that's my point is, the, the philosophy is, from a planning perspective, is to try to maintain off-road access between properties. And all I'm asking you to do is consider that as you look at this approval process.
I think that's important for future growth.
So we would just have a little bonus on there, so yeah, it's approved, but-
With conditions.
With conditions.
With a gate now or a gate in the future if it's needed?
Probably in the future.
I think in the future, just because there's-
There's nothing really there.
Nothing really-
Yeah.
And I think it would look nicer, although I just didn't, like I said, if there was a need for a gate that we could see.
If there was a little bit of shrub, that'd be great.
Yeah, I was going to say, we still want it to look nice, obviously. You know, when people come in from the road, we try to dress our cars up as best as possible.
You could just ask for a couple of low level shrubs between each, each post and send colleagues. But then there would be something in the record that we asked for, something like that. I don't know what you normally do, but just asking for a couple of low level shrubs between each one of the posts.
I mean, if we did something similar to, you know, what you see here.
Yeah, you got those spreaders down there, put a few spreaders in there, add some green to it, put a little mulch down there. I think you'll dress it up.
Just do that right up, you know, the part that runs right here by the road versus-
Well, I would say, my suggestion would be that you turn it back to the west at least the depths of your first car.
Okay.
That would work.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, all right.
So, I mean, yeah, that, I don't see a problem with that.
The first car.
Yeah, so the greenery would go from here to the air.
Oh, the greenery. I have to talk about the guardrail.
No.
No, he needs to go a little further than that.
No, I need that a little bit more.
Yeah.
But do we need to be specific of how much he puts in, or?
I think it's pretty evident by having the site plan here and we, he had the, had a drawing, we drew it up on the copy that was in your information.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one was, that one was a rough sketch.
We didn't get the color one, but we have a yellow line drawn where it's going to go.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a rough sketch, a scratch up.
That's okay, but at least-
I got a red line on this one.
That's the one, what was the red line one?
I have a red line on this one that was on it, but-
Yes.
Yeah, that was better.
And, and all you have to do is, far as shrubs, each type of shrub that, say, bored on himself or anybody else, will tell you what the maximum height it will grow and the maximum width it will grow. So you just pick one of the-
So you don't have to maintain the-
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another thing, I got enough guys already.
You can understand that.
Something I can live under the snow.
Living under the mulch.
No water.
They have what they call carpet spreaders, I've got a couple in front of my house. They just, they're right on the ground, but they add the greenery to it.
Like those low lines you have frequently.
All right, who, okay, who's wording this one? I don't know, we work this, I thought you got conditions.
Yeah, but it has to be one of us makes a motion. All right, Sam, you go. Let me think about this. I'll make a motion to approve the application, the site plan application, with the condition that A, there is some landscape and greenery on the portion of the guardrail that parallels M-15 and in the section that goes west from M-15 to a depth of minimum of one car length back. And B, that if the adjoining property in the future does pave to connect up to the existing pavement on your property, that a gate will be, will be added to accommodate through flow traffic between the properties.
And should we say at their expense? Or will that be something they need to figure out?
Between the two of them later.
At, at, at their business?
At their expense.
At?
Not ours.
No, 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 I know.
I'll let them fight it out.
Okay, very good. I didn't know if we needed to specify that in-
I don't think we need, we just say, hey, if it gets paved, then you got to-
Then they got to figure it out, very good.
Yeah.
Second. There you go. There you go.
So I missed a little bit. I've got a motion to approve Marsh Auto Sales Site Plan Application with conditions, A, some landscape and greenery facing M-15 and to west-
And the west section of the guardrail to a depth of at least one car length. I could just say 10 feet, I suppose.
There's no one guarding.
20 feet if you want to go.
Or truck length.
It's marked on the site plan where those lines end for the parking spaces, we'll pick that.
Oh, we have to talk about the answers, yeah.
One feeling.
He's going to make it look nice anyways.
Motion to approve Marsh Auto Sales Site Plan Application with conditions, A, some landscape and greenery facing M-15 and to west section of guardrail to a depth of one car length. And B, if adjoining property in future does pave connection to Marsh property, that the, a gate should be added to allow through access.
It will be added or shall be? Not sure.
Shall?
Shall is great.
Be added to allow through access. Was there anything after that?
Like eight feet or something.
No, just open.
I think that was it.
Okay, so the motion was by Hayden, who was the second?
You want to? You want to do a vote, Lain, or just an A or an A or a roll call?
Well, okay, we have a second, correct?
Yes.
All right.
We're waiting for you.
Roll call, please. When you get time, Liz.
MacArthur?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Yes.
Nigell?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pauschen?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for commenting that request, we appreciate that, too.
Yeah, that's why I came down here, because, trust me-
Are you the manager?
Yeah, general manager.
JP?
Yeah, JP originator.
You're awfully young for a general manager.
That's awesome. That's insane. Oh, yes, I love that, I love to see that, good.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, you too.
All right. Don't need a guardrail. Try to stand and you walk away.
Yes, it's guarded.
He can't do this age.
Yeah, he is, he's like-
He looks so young in the garden.
Yeah, he's like-
I was impressed that he has that position.
I think that's great, I love to see our young ones doing it.
All right. Next item, B, webinar training.
I just wanted to ask if I could take a couple webinar classes. They're $25 and I wanted to get approval here first so that I, in that way I could call the office and set up one of them. I'm not sure which one I want to do. Because I know, and the reason I ask, because I know it's proper procedure to ask that, that the council, when they do their training, they don't even do a roll call on their training or they just call the office and have Liz set it up and they go do it. And they don't bring it, you know, forth to the council. So I thought we should bring it forth to our planning commission, so.
What are they about?
There's all different wonderful kinds.
Oh, cool.
There's the, well-
Those are webinars?
Yes, webinars. And there's, and I would suggest there's, there's a local government 101 and I would suggest that for anyone who's in council planning, anything.
So this is working on the website?
They have a class online.
It's just an online class, you just sit in front of the computer.
You sit in front of the computer and go through it.
Starts at like 11:00.
You can start anytime.
You can do it anytime you would like. There is one called Local Government 101.
Okay, now I got it.
Yep, how to do motions.
I had no idea what a webinar was.
Yeah, the difference between a general rule, village and all, it's just, it's good basic knowledge. And I was looking, there's some, uh, community, Understanding Community Systems, Freedom of Information Act, probably. There's a plethora, so you can just get online and look through them. But the ones I looked at were $25, so I wanted to get permission to take one or two.
I think we have training budget for our people.
And what you can do with those?
Do we need the-
Because you can set up-
I can share after, again.
You can't, but what you can do is you can stream them together. Like you could say, hey, we're going to do this and anybody who wants to come can. And you could like use the library room on the projector and watch it.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. I would do that if I had time to do that, but why I want to take them at home is so I can do them when I can do them, yeah.
Now, are these through Michigan Planning Association membership?
No, 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 yep. Yep, and it looks a page, you get on there and go under Training and there is a section that says Webinar Training and you hit that link and there's just-
Because I know we were all signed up for membership in the Michigan Planning Association, I think it was, too.
And they have training-
They offer training and stuff.
They do, too, yeah, because kind of like when we went to our CIP, they do things online too, but a lot of it's more in person. And they're always further away. They're always the drive person.
Bill, also has such a nice respect.
Oh, yeah, it's all right.
So, Bill, do we have to make a motion on this, or?
Yeah, just because you do have it in the training budget for the planning commission, but the only reason I had told Melanie is that you just want to be aware of it. It's, it's in your budget, so you guys can approve it.
Now, how many webinars you have, just two right now?
I'm only interested, I'm interested in one, possibly two. So that would be a total of $50, I'd probably do both.
So I make a motion to approve Melanie going to whatever, or, involved, well, let's see. Not going anywhere.
Go on, go on.
Attending. Doing the webinar.
Participating in webinar.
A webinar class.
Class.
Beautiful.
As she wishes.
How many?
I second.
Two?
How many? One, two, three?
Not, just say not to exceed two. How's that?
Not to exceed.
Up to two.
Up to two classes. There you go.
All right.
Thank you.
I second.
There you go.
If I do do one in the evening, is anyone interested in sitting with me?
Roll call or yea and nay?
Yea and nay.
Well, I'm.
Turn the budget.
Okay, we got it.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we move into old business, master plan. Identifying primary and secondary and key stakeholders. Well, I'm gonna pass this on to you, Melanie, since you did a lot of the meat and potatoes on this.
Um, okay, really, we're just at a point, did everybody get my email?
I did, yes, I did.
Okay. And, and so it's just, it is a living document, meaning we can add and subtract from this anytime. Um, and especially when you guys, there are our businesses on here and I don't have, I don't know the names of certain people. But I think, Lee, were you gonna get a, a business?
One of the, one of the, can I?
Yeah, yeah.
Add in real quick? Because we wanted to put together, one of the things we just did is put together a pretty good business list.
Oh, good, good, good.
Yes, and it, it also includes.
That copy of.
It includes apartment complexes, condominiums, and group homes.
One in row, 'cause we have, we have those, but we didn't have all the names.
I have one.
Um, we gathered, oh, I was gonna say businesses.
This, this.
We gathered them all up, but did we compile them yet? Like, do we have a?
Yes, you have the new, uh, new one I sent you. I emailed you.
I never got it.
Oh, you did, okay.
Make one.
This is my old one.
Yeah, this is the old one.
There was one in there?
No, I didn't, somehow my, uh.
I, I got, I have one here with my package, but.
Yeah, I didn't.
Oh, yeah, I thought I dropped her.
No, you should, no, I brought them in. I can make more copies.
Oh, okay.
I thought you guys were turning them out.
I think they're my.
Look, you got, oh, thank you.
Give me your time.
Okay. Um, so basically, once we go through this.
Go ahead, mine doesn't say.
I got it in email. I don't know if that.
Are you?
Is there any changes since the one you snail about before?
Um, there, I sent it out around three o'clock today.
Okay, I don't.
I didn't look at, I didn't look at my email, that's why.
Okay. Okay, so basically, what we'll do with this is we're gonna send it to Mike Dean once, now I can, you know, really get specifics with it. And if you guys can think of any more people or know of any.
We have, we didn't make a copy of this, 'cause it's eighty-five pages long.
Yeah. I gotta ask Mike how he wants us to do that.
We made one copy for the planning commission, but this is the voter roll.
Okay.
Uh, in addition, so it's got names and address on that and we'll turn it over to the planning commission. So you have a copy of that. We're also gonna get for you, and it takes just a little time, uh, the tax, tax roll. We're actually gonna have them print out labels.
Oh, good, for mailings.
So what you could do is.
Send out.
If you wanna send out a card or something, you could, you know, saying, hey, we wanna have the meeting at the Old Town Hall for the planning thing. You could send out, I don't have a label, we're trying to see if we can do that same thing here.
Oh, that'd be great.
But tax, tax roll will get you, everybody who owns property.
Right.
The voter roll will get you everybody who's registered and.
Right.
Right, right, right.
And so then, the only other gap we've got is a person living, a person living in the village.
Renting.
That, that is renting, that is not registered to vote. So, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, but the guns don't shoot that straight.
Hopefully not too many homeless.
Really need that, Mel?
Well, I, I think we should ask, I'll ask Mike Dean, but I, I know for sure the businesses. I'll ask Mike Dean what he wants and then we will get it to him. 'Cause what he's going to do then is take us through the process of next step, how we start contacting. He's gonna guide us through that. We just need it, stakeholders identified. And I didn't wanna sit and do that for three, four hours.
Yeah, here.
We could've just done it, like, yeah, so I'll add the businesses.
Melanie, do you need to get the names on these fifty-three, I'm sorry, seventy-six names? 'Cause they all don't have a name. I mean, I could be, well, the work on that, getting names.
Would you mind?
No.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Liz, Bill, do you have that document electronically?
I have to get that from the township, because we don't do our own voting anymore.
Can you take that hard copy and just scan it, so we at least have like a PDF?
Absolutely.
Of that, okay, 'cause I think that would be a good way to, if you could scan that and then you could distribute the scanned copy to the planning commissioners, I could have.
Key stakeholders.
No, it came from Bill. Bill, is that one yours?
Yeah.
Did you guys hear what I was just asking?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good.
No, I got it, I got it.
You got that, okay.
Something I already did a function. Care, I'll put, I'll take an extra one.
Give one to Liz, too.
And I did some more.
Okay.
Okay, so then my question to you, Lee, is when do you want us to get this into Mike? Because he's attending the next meeting and he's gonna guide us then. So when do I need to let everyone know, okay, I'm sending the last list in?
I think the sooner, the sooner the better, the more time you'll have to work out.
Well, I just, I'm asking you so you can tell everybody what the deadline is. Instead of me sending emails, you got it anymore? You got it? Yeah, just tell everyone the deadline to have it in.
I, did you, you got my suggestion about organizing these? We have the, the primary, et cetera, and I suggested subcategorizing them.
I don't know, I think what he, he's looking at, like, let's just pick the township, for example. You know, put the township on here, the township board. I think a representative, not all of them, but I think a representative from them. The same with some other big groupings, it'd probably be a representative.
Yeah, but I mean, right now you have everything listed under this primary stakeholders. It's just one long list and it doesn't identify whether they're a resident, a business owner, a church, a school. And I was, that's what I was suggesting, subcategories and saying, okay, residents.
That was kinda like Maybellinas, you don't know if that's a business or.
Yeah, but I mean, if you wanted to, if you wanted to sort that out, it's, it's, I just like having things organized where you can sort different ways.
I'm gonna hand this to Mike and then Mike Dean, I'm gonna ask him, you know, how, I will let him do it. 'Cause he has a process. He has a process for it.
Yeah, my preference would actually be if it was in Excel, just have, we could have the category, type of stakeholders, type of, of, uh, contact, you know, business owners, et cetera. And then, then, then we could, if it was in Excel, we could sort it anyway we want.
I can put it in Excel, I have no problem doing that, but that's Mike Dean's call. He's gonna guide us through this. We were just to identify for it, that's all.
Yeah, 'cause my thought is, just like the results from the survey, if we have raw data in an Excel that we can format in a sort of different way.
No, I understand.
You know, it makes it easier for us to take a look at it.
Okay, I'll put it in Excel, but then Mike will take us from there.
Is everybody else okay with that?
Pardon?
When do you want it in the mic?
I, if you, I can send it to him if you want, or you can, either way.
No, I'm just saying, when? 'Cause I gotta add these.
Send it a little better.
Okay, I'll do that.
Because I think he's waiting on us.
Yes.
To get him the information.
Correct.
Then he can go, okay, so it'll take me two weeks to put this all together?
Okay.
Or three weeks, whatever.
Would it be reasonable to have it by, say, maybe mid-May, like May fifteenth, ready to send it?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this, I'll do, I'll, by the end of the week it'll be doing, how's that?
I was just saying, is it due date? If we say it's due date.
Okay, you're right, you won't.
I was just saying, if we.
I may have volunteered for something I can't do.
No, 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 but you won't, that's true.
It'll probably take a couple weeks to get.
I'm, I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion for a date, May fifteenth, does that sound reasonable to get?
What do you think?
This ready to send it to Mike?
But we asked Mike when he needs it.
And then that'll give Mike two weeks before our next planning commission meeting.
Yeah, I'll call him, but like Bob said, he's gonna.
It'll just take a little while to get.
Yeah. But I will ask Mike, because if there's a cutoff that we're gonna miss another month, we don't wanna do that either. Yeah, so I'll, I'll just call it that.
I'm not sure if we can always add.
Yeah, yeah.
He's waiting on us or?
I have no doubt we were gonna forget somebody.
Well, we're not, we're not paying by the duration, we're paying by the number of meetings and stuff. So we've had, and, and I think that.
That's why we didn't want him here, it's a waste of time.
And I think that, based upon what the, the council has expressed their concerns, I think if it came down to it, we said, we, we don't quite have everything ready, I would prefer to extend and take a little longer and make sure that we have everything complete and thorough.
I agree.
And the village council doesn't feel like we're trying to rush something through. Uh, rather than try to, you know, hit some due date and not have everything ready quite yet.
Part of the reason why we just gave you the businesses, you know, instead of, in particular names or something associated with it, is typically a business will pick who they want to, much like you said.
Represent.
To represent them, you know, if you, if you send it and say somebody, you know, the owner of the business or something like that, they'll sometimes won't pass it on. Or if you guys do your, like, your thing, we'd like to have a representative from the business attend, you know.
Now, I, I could.
And I'm hoping Mike will guide us through that step, how we're going to address that. All he wanted was.
And Mike will, when we talked at the, the, the joint meeting there, one of the, there was a great deal of emphasis about the, you know, you know, notifying the people and getting them, identifying them as a key stakeholder. And so that's part of why we put together this voter registration and tax thing, too, so. Yeah, 'cause I didn't see them.
And when does the mailing go out for the taxes for that? 'Cause we were gonna put something in there.
It goes out pretty quick, uh, and we can stuff, we can stuff envelopes for the taxes. The only thing bad about the tax mailing is that if you have your taxes taken out in your mortgage, then the, all those, which is a, a large number of residents.
Escrow, E.P.
Escrow. So what happens is they send it to your escrow company in, you know, somewhere, somewhere in Egypt that I.
Okay.
Get where I'm at my drift, so that's why I asked the question, would it be smarter just to get a copy of the tax roll?
Okay.
Or which the assessor, you know how the assessor sends out the, sends out the assessment? And that comes directly to you regardless of your taxes, how much your property's worth?
Right.
That's the, that's the role.
We just got that, or does that come out?
Yeah, we just got that, but what we can do is take, that's where we're gonna get the labels. That way we can use those labels to send it out, so that it won't go to the bank in Colorado or something like that, so. I was kinda the, under the impression that all of them came to the house and I, I didn't know that they all went to, they get sent to a bank or something, or, so.
And Bill, you didn't think that it was necessary to get the names of these people?
I, I really don't think so. I think that, I would, I mean, that's up to you guys, you can, but.
I picked up on that real quick.
We have an address, so we can mail it to them.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda why, that's kinda why, and I think you just did a, she just did a mail merge, too, so.
I learned how to do mail merge.
So she can literally.
That's good to know.
For a price. Take and we can do a, like a form letter. Or whatever, invitation, some kind of invitation or whatever.
Right, but see, and that's what I'm wondering, how Mike wants us to do that process?
That, that's what we need to find.
Yeah, do they do the labels? They may. I don't know. We're paying them. They may do that, so it won't fall on you.
We, we can.
So, but we can.
We wrapped up the township, we'll get the labels from them for free.
Yeah, right, there you go.
So then, what you're gonna send out then will be to the business and then you're gonna do one off, that same type of letter off the tax roll to each individual house.
If you wanna reach the people, I think that that's probably the best approach.
If we wanna try to pick out, you know, uh, long-time residents, people that have been here for quite a while.
Yes.
To make sure that we emphasize to them, you know, I mean, we want new people. Not that we don't, but I, I know there's a lot of people, folks that have been here.
That was part of that list, yeah. That was long-time residents, 'cause you send something, too. Yes.
But I'm sure there's a lot more, I just.
Nobody was sending it stuff.
I just threw off some folks I knew and.
I know, I thought there would be a lot more.
Well, I mean, that list is, I mean, you can go out and on. If you're gonna include a resident, you include all the residents, not pick and choose which residents.
Yes.
It's either all of them or not, I mean, you understand.
Right, but there's gonna have to be some of them in the subgroups coming up. We're gonna have to reach out and see who wants, who wants to be involved, really.
Right, well, the letter is going to say that, you're inviting everybody to these meetings and then they can decide when they want.
Right, I, I know that and I understand that, but Mike will, he's, he, he will tell us what the letter's gonna be and everything.
Well, one thing, I, I would like, before the next one goes out, because I was a little unhappy with the way that the survey went out, the hard copy one with errors in it, and then finding out how the mailing went out, I would like to have a little bit more detail upfront of exactly what's gonna happen before he just sends stuff out again, because I wanna make sure that it's, we don't get kinda like surprised by the results or surprised by how it goes out again. But that's just my comment on the processor. I think that we need to make sure that, that we have, yep, this is good, you can send it. Not just, okay, here's some information format and send it out without any review by us.
Okay, if I hear you right, you, you wanna proofread who he's sending this stuff to?
Yes, I would like the opportunity to.
Review it?
Kind of review or review what he's planning to send out before it actually.
Yeah, and he will do that. Uh, he's not gonna do anything without reviewing it with us. I'm not sending this, I'm not sending this to anybody that's gonna sign the letter that we never reviewed.
Yeah, well, the survey went out without getting proofread, so I mean, that's, that's just an example there of what.
I guess we have to stay on top of them, though.
Yeah. Um, one thing I wanted to ask is, is there a way we can identify with all these businesses whether they rent or own the property, the, the building that they are in, other than the tax? We could probably match up with tax rolls, I suppose. Because I think that it does make a difference. If you are a business that owns the building, you have a little more stake than somebody who's.
I assume these are owners' names, are the people that own, I know Bill Brothers owns a tube place, uh.
These are, these are businesses, I don't.
These are businesses, but a lot of the buildings, they may be leasing the space from a landlord. These are businesses, but a lot of the buildings, they may be leasing the space from a landlord and that, and I think the landlords also, we need to know that, we'll get from the tax rolls. But the landlords also are stakeholders that need to be included too.
Yes, they're big tax stakeholders.
But there is a difference in who is more of a stakeholder. They are both stakeholders. You own the building, you may not give a goody what goes on in North Hill.
Yes. But if you, if you're a business that owns a building, you're a double stakeholder as opposed to a renter
Right.
and then you also have the landlord lord who are two separate stakeholders.
So we're meeting both those groups on that.
Yeah, so I just, I just wanna also make sure we identify the landlords of, of the properties too and can kinda match that up somehow. Just to.
Just so everybody gets it.
Yeah.
Correct, and we have the landlords under the secondary stakeholders, we, that was one, yeah, but we have, that's why we're, I was asking, yeah.
Cuts and dry.
So we'll get the more information the way Bill's, we'll land it apart, so that we'll work up those.
And I do kind of have on the list a little bit where you'll see the business name and the location.
I can do it, sorry.
Sorry, I do have on the list where you have the business name and then a few columns over the location. So for instance, number ten, Bonnie Properties, Bonnie Morrow, she owns the building for Impact North and the Family Dollar. And those are, those are on the list as well, so.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, but that's a different, I see, yeah, because I would not know that she owns, that Bonnie owns Impact North.
Well, she doesn't own Impact North, she just owns the building that they're in.
She owns the whole property, the corner, right?
Okay, oh, does she?
Which encompasses Dollar Tree, Impact North.
Okay, yes, I wouldn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, owns that whole chunk.
Okay.
Not Impact North, Fit Body Boot Camp.
I was just gonna say, we're not, we're not in Impact North.
Yeah, yeah, I know where you're talking about, yeah. Okay.
Only get half a person.
Yeah, I know, and the lesson is the manager, she's not even the owner.
Make sure no one's side of that.
Right.
She's definitely, is that kinda, is that her person?
She is.
Okay, so.
Is Brian the owner?
Brian Calacay, yeah.
Right, so we, we have to make Mike aware of that you wanna review who the business stakeholders are, whether they own the property or they run the business, or both will be contacted if you want it sent to.
Aren't you doing that? Are you doing it or are you still doing that? Or are you doing that?
We aren't doing it.
No, 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 contacting Mike and it, I can't hear him, I'm clicking, contacting Mike to make sure that he, or whatever he wants.
I'm just, I'm just talking to you.
What I was, I was just saying, before anything goes out to the community, whether it's businesses or residents, I just wanna make sure that planning commission and possibly council should have an opportunity to, and maybe offer.
Review where the school.
Just review the content that will be distributed and how, and where it'll be distributed to, like the, the distribution list and the content that's being sent over.
And I think that should just be standard.
I think it is. I, I believe it is.
Yes. It didn't seem that that process was quite followed.
We did go over the questions on the survey, but we.
Yeah, we did, but the mailing, I thought we were, I thought it would be the addresses and the, and he instead it went to routes which went to people outside of.
Well, we also had it through the schools and our website and we did go over that stuff, so we're getting better. I would think we will know to ask more questions next time.
And if even, if you went to Beekys, when you went there, they had the, mail the copy of it, telling me you go to this website
Yeah, always.
to do the survey if you did not receive anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
No, and I was finding the survey with it expanding beyond the borders of the village itself, because, you know, the surrounding community, it's, it's important to understand their view too. It's not as critical as the residents of the village, but it is important to at least know and understand that view too, because we do draw people in from outside.
Absolutely.
I'm sure that, that went to some folks that had no clue where the village was about that.
It might.
Which is important that they get.
You have that, you recorded that in minutes, correct?
Yeah.
What, yes.
Yeah, alright.
So did that.
Alright. Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Okay, the next item is goal priority exercise. I, I don't know if everybody did their homework.
I didn't know we were supposed to.
I thought we did, I didn't know.
Did we get this?
I thought we were supposed to kinda go over it as a group. I know this is an individual and group, and then it changed after Larry sent something. So I printed that up, but I didn't do it yet. Did we wanna talk about it though, or just send it into who?
Well. I guess we, we, you know, if you wanna take time, we can go through each one. I went through, filled mine out and I was gonna staple them together and we get them forwarded to Mike.
Don't we, we send them to Mike and then he, I thought, when I, I filled mine out, we're, he's gonna send it to Mike and then we would get something back of the results of all of that.
Okay.
Then we probably will.
Same way with those vision statements.
Okay.
You guys wanna pull them out and just drop them off in the village office?
Yeah, I've got mine here. Do you want them labeled who they came from or just?
We will collect.
Yeah, so she can check and see who.
Are these also going to DDA and, and council?
I don't know, I have to ask.
It says council. We will repeat this exercise with council.
Yeah.
And what about DDA?
I think DDA should get it.
That's how it says.
I know, but I think they should.
I think that since the three of us, our, our three bodies have been meeting jointly, discussing joint topics, I think all three bodies should fit the same.
Yeah. I agree. Definitely agree.
Okay.
When would you like that by?
I did not fill mine out yet.
Pardon me?
When do you want that by?
Um, did he have a?
Do you just like get it to by Thursday or Friday?
To work on at the main meeting.
Aren't you setting it to Tuesday? I would say by Friday, because I'm not even in the office on Friday.
Okay.
So that way I'll have.
I guess that's Lee. I'll fill mine out and I'll drop it off.
We plan on trying to send it over Monday, what we get here or whatever.
So he's already gonna repeat this exercise with the council, so we just need to institute the DDA.
Oh, I know. Oh, yeah.
I think we should probably.
You gotta send it out at the end.
Send it out to the council.
Good information or whatever he thinks, but.
Yeah.
It's hard to decide for yourself.
This will be interesting when, yeah, when they come back. Yeah, it'll be interesting when it comes back.
Okay.
So do we have to, do we have to ask McKinnon, or Mike to send it to the DDA?
We'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? If not, we'll move to item three, visioning session mailers. I don't know anything about that.
That, in, in reading in it, I think what he's meaning by that, remember he said in the joint meeting that he wanted to have something somewhere where we opened up, I'll use the old town hall for an example, and people from the community had a chance to come in and.
Oh, it's not a mailer? I thought those are more of.
It's number three, the visioning session on his note.
Right.
It's the number three.
Oh, it is.
So you need to determine when the mailers are gonna go out and when you wanna have a meeting, correct?
Yes. Last stakeholder being.
Set a date.
Right.
That's, that's what that was.
Okay, so he's looking for a date. Afterward. If the last stakeholder. Okay, so all he's just, all he's saying there is how we distribute it, which we discussed basically, that's back on the state, identified stakeholders, correct? Or am I wrong?
Number two.
And that he's gotta go over all the different ways of distribution.
So we need to, we need to talk to Mike and find out what he wants to do at that meeting and include that.
Yeah.
We've, we've got a way, we've got kind of an agreed upon way to contact the people. Now we need to determine what is the agenda for that, for lack of a better term, meeting and what he's gonna do at that meeting. So if you want, maybe me and somebody else could call Mike and someone from the planning commission, call Mike and try to get a better idea. Or if you guys want to, that's, that's up to you.
I'll do it with you.
If that's.
Lee?
What? I'm, I'm, I'm ready, but it's sorta hard for us to do this without knowing when he's gonna hand this work.
We just, we just volunteered to call Mike and ask him about it.
I will do that.
Oh, okay. You don't know. So you're doing it with you now?
You wanna do that with me, Lee?
What are we calling him?
Lee?
You wanna do that?
I thought all we're doing is scheduling a meeting to give him the information.
Wanna do it with me, or?
No.
You want me and you to do it, or?
If you want, go ahead.
He's not telling us how we're sending these out yet.
Cause I, I can call him up and try to figure out what his game plan is or whatever. You want me to do that?
Doing it in the text.
Okay.
So what it says, we have to decide where the house is.
Go ahead.
If they.
And then just email him and CC, CC me on it and. Okay.
I'll, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
Cool. If you need help, let me know, but I think you got it.
Alright.
Okay, village owners.
We're still in the visioning session. The PC needs to determine when those mailings go out and set a date for the timing.
We're gonna call tomorrow about that though, because we have more questions than answers for him. We're at the same time. I'm sorry, Bob, it was.
Okay, anything further on that item? I'm gonna move on to item four. Village owned property discussion.
Yes, that's the village. You and I were talking about it and you wanted, I, you said, let, don't let me forget to put a note.
Oh, oh, oh.
Is that the, is that the property we own at the end of, um, elementary?
Yes, over by the storage, over by the storage unit, that was bought for the, um, the sewer, for the sewer treatment center.
Oh, 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 okay, that, yeah, that is, we're talking about the property that the village purchased for the waste treatment. And, uh, what we wanna do, do we include that in the master plan? Are they gonna sell it? Are we, are they gonna put it up for sale for commercial property? We need to know what they wanna do with that properties.
Well, I had, when I was thinking about that, I, I got, I saw that note and I had this, this is this concept idea that came up, like we were had at our last joint meeting, but I had this concept idea that what if we moved or relocate the DPW yard to that property and then free up that one space by the ball fields for more recreational development?
Like, wasn't that property at some point discussed as being used as like a, um, a connector to that one ten Ortonville Road for access to.
But we could still have the DPW yard there and have a connector through there. I think that we could have, accommodate both of that.
How come we don't get, then this communication, if it still is, we, we need to know what's going on.
It's never not been. That was David Trent and we did not have a manager for six months and it has not gone anywhere.
And I think before David, you know, it was even brought up before David.
The house next to Beekys on Oakwood Road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They want to have a safe access path from the village at Narren Street at the dead end to access our property. Those, um, the family was approached, the family is interested, that's as far as it had gotten.
No, I'm worried.
There is no, it's a fix in that.
We also tried to buy a bridge over that, over to the.
Absolutely.
And then you've got a walking thing to Beekys primarily done. You don't have to do all along Oakwood Road.
And that's part of, the idea is we need to put them as a plan.
Well, you still have to have Oakwood access as a totally different, other people will be.
I love that.
I think we'll deal with that at the master plan, right? I mean.
Master, yeah, well, that's, we just wanted to ask.
There's one other additional item.
What was being done or talked about.
So it doesn't make any, so it really doesn't make any difference what the village council, a few of them think of it. I mean, that's part of what, um.
He was just curious.
There's two other items. Number one, Brandon Fire Department purchased land on M fifteen to put a fire hall in. As far as a master plan goes in the future, is this property gonna be available to rezone? We've also had the township looking at purchasing Bel Air School.
Yeah.
So we've got properties that are zoned here that could possibly be up in air.
But I think isn't that what the master plan does is.
Is that what you want your future lands used to be in.
We just need to make sure it's part of it, because those are going to be empty soon maybe or not.
Yeah, or make sure you find out, you have an empty fire department, you have an empty township office.
So the question, the question is, we need, on the.
Lee, yeah.
On the other land, the Narren, or the Narren Street land, we need to find out what the commission or council's plan is for that land going forward.
If there is one.
What do you, what do you guys think about?
If, if not, we have a lot of ideas.
Or if they've not talked about it, bring it to light so they can do something with it.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, or at least.
I, I'd like, what do you guys think about the concept of relocating DPW yard to that property? It's more out of the way and would free up space that maybe could, we could put in more recreational stuff in, in that same area where the other ball fields are.
That's a thought. That's a thought. I like the idea of the park.
I'm not sure if there's enough room for another ball field.
Well, maybe not, but we could, there might be, there might be other things.
No, no, no.
What are you gonna do with the buildings? DPW buildings? It would just have more parking if you don't think.
Porch and pits, you know, who knows?
How about, how about.
But I'm saying you're not gonna destroy the buildings. He would just say, we're gonna have parking back there, that would be it.
How about plow down and make parking?
We could use a building, it could be an enclosed pavilion for.
For watching games.
Run out for people or, or let people use it for public events and, or picnics and parties or whatever.
Well, those are good ideas to talk about when we do the master plan, because we really do need to come up with some neat ideas.
Maybe it's sewers, my girl would do that. You're not gonna do that with all sewers.
Okay.
Where are we?
Okay. Okay, we'll go to, anything else on it? If not, we'll move to B, capital improvement plan.
We didn't include that in the packet.
We received.
Was there something to include in the packet?
Well, I sent you all out that, uh.
The list that.
Oh, you off your app chart? I'm sorry, I thought that was in there.
You sent it to me?
Yeah.
I did get that.
Didn't you send that to us in a group of, in a PDF? I thought you had the budget that you come up with or stuff that you went over with Bob.
Stuff I went over with Bob, yeah, I sent that out.
Wasn't that, I thought that was part of the PDF, but I don't see it here.
Yeah.
Draft CIP?
Draft CIP.
I know, I got it.
I know, but I did read it. I'll print it out.
And the point, the point of that was just basically the couple things. Number one, just a, that's kinda Bob and I's things. That's not an all inclusive list by any stretch of the imagination. That's the things that, just that we thought of based upon a meeting and kinda put, like, you're not gonna do, unless you got a, a million dollars worth of grants all of a sudden fall in their pocket, you're only gonna be able to do X amount of roads or X amount of CIP per year.
Correct.
So the, you don't really need to pay attention to what year we kinda throw them in with a possible exception of the equipment. The equipment, when you look at it, like for example.
Life cycle of that.
Yeah, like the lawnmower, for example, is.
Stove blower, all that stuff.
Yeah, that's approaching twenty years old and if you look at an old CIP that was done in the early two thousands, that was supposed to be replaced probably about seven, eight years ago, like the John Deere tractor. But it's in great shape and maybe.
You sent us the Excel spreadsheet and then Larry asked for the extra one for prioritizing.
Right, and I changed it and put a prior, prioritization column on there and we sent it back out. What we need to do with that, and I'm, hopefully I'm not stepping on your toes Larry, is you guys had that project evaluation sheets?
That we got.
For each one of those.
Yeah.
And then my thought would be that in addition to those that I sent you, that if you had additional projects, that you would go ahead and fill out prioritization sheets on those and we'll put them on that spreadsheet. Now, what Rose process in the CIP is that once we identify all these projects, we send them to Row. Row.
Okay.
And then Row checks the, kinda gives us a sense check on the dollar values that I plugged in.
What it's gonna cost to do.
What it's gonna cost, kinda back of the napkin type stuff, it's not detailed, but that's, that's what they'll do. So our, our step on CIP is to fill out the identified projects.
Does this, it?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Doesn't have a prioritization column on it?
Should have, you might have to do them landscape or, believe me, it's there.
I, I know you sent out an updated one. I think I still have the old one here.
Is it, yeah, I could get mine to like correct it on the big sheet. I tried legal two, that was a mess.
No, could.
So if you look at it online now, there's another column after funding that says prior, priority score or something.
I still have one.
Alright.
Uh, I don't know, okay.
Okay.
Now, I think, um, Liz, did we get those, those flyers and handouts from the, um, the capital improvement plan workshop at the.
I thought I handed those out at the last meeting.
Okay, I thought so too. But when we did the workshop, they had, like, they had a list of projects and then they had like multiple different types of criteria they could rate them under. And then at the end, you had like a, a composite score. I would like to see something similar to that where we, you know, where our, our bodies get to, we decide what the priority categories are for prioritization, what the categories are and what the weighting is on them and then the, and then we can calculate composite. And then what we can do is we can take those and everybody rates them and we can generate the composites from the.
And I can do the same thing if, if that's what you're looking for, like that spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Row has that, so I can send that out to you guys.
Yeah, in the Excel form?
In Excel form.
Okay.
Cause that's what I'd like to do, to be able to have, you know, everybody rate those and then come up with a composite score with the summary of results, so that we can say, yeah, this is the summary of results of the relative rankings. And then we have like an objective, a more objective way to prioritize and, and.
Let me, let me talk to Row about, let me talk to Row and see what their scoring system is on that sheet, because they do have that. I was under the impression based on the last meeting we had, that you guys had a prior, a prioritization sheet that you guys wanted to use.
But they sent it to us in PDF form. They sent us Excel.
That was from that class.
Okay.
That was from the class.
So if you wanna use, if you wanna use Rose form, which is very similar.
See, that's, that's what they had from the class. And you can see they had a whole bunch of different priorities.
Yeah, Rose is almost exactly the same.
Perfect, and then we'll use Rose like that.
I'll use Rose, cause that's what they're used to and I can plug this in and.
Okay.
That'll work out great. That was a good guideline.
Yeah, cause I, I think that would be a really good way that we can kinda like capture the relative priority of the different things and, you know, put some kind of, of an overall objective rating.
Right.
And I think that way, there's not gonna be an argument, oh, why is this one more important than that? Well, we ranked it all of, the, all of these categories and this how it came out.
Right.
Okay.
So I will, I will send out, I will take this one just as a starting point. And I'll, I'll put these on that spreadsheet.
We didn't put this into that spreadsheet.
And then if you guys wanna add more stuff to it, just either email me or whatever, I can put it on there, but, and then we send it out and then you can, you know, we can grow the list or whatever.
It, what I would like to do, if I'm not speaking out of turn as far as the planning commission members go, I would like you to take these and plug them in on the worksheet and come up with what you think priorities are. Yeah, I don't know if that's getting a cart before the horse or.
Yeah, I, I think we'll need that spreadsheet from Row that he's stopping at first and then. Yeah, I, I think we'll need that spreadsheet from Row that he's stopping at first and then we can plug those in there and do that.
I would like to have each of us members go through and go in and prioritize it what we think it is and then we'll get together at our next meeting and we can discuss it intelligently. In other words, everybody had a chance to digest it.
Yeah, and, and just one other thing I think would be useful is I know we just spent money to replace the tractor. So, that's obviously not gonna be a project in the next probably five-year plan. But I think that that's something that, when we know it's an infrastructure-type item with a life cycle associated, if we do have any recent major purchases that kind of fall in that, I'd like to kind of like also capture those ones that we know, maybe not, won't be in the five years, but, you know, capture them with an expected when's the next replacement date by them, just so that we have them in the future moving forward, say, okay, these are future CIP projects that need to be revisited when the time comes.
Yeah, that's what we talked about at the very beginning of the day.
Yes.
Yeah, we will have a, we will eventually have a, what I refer to as a capital asset list. So, we'll go through and the capital asset list will show, and we've got the bones of it kind of, but I need to go back and get it better to where we'll list all the capital assets, equipment and stuff that we have, when it was purchased, if we know, and what we think the life cycle is so that we can, you know, understand and get it, start saving for it for life.
Yeah, I, I have the impression that we have a pretty good idea informally about what we have and what to do. The only thing we really need to do is just capture it formally and document it mostly, I think.
Yeah.
And it's not that complicated.
No, it's not. It's not. Trust me, you should see the licensing I have to manage for my service and my company. It's, that's, that's a nightmare compared to this.
I was buying fire trucks 20 years from now. I'm doing the same kind of spreadsheet and it just really was not that difficult.
No.
If I find it out.
When you get the system set up. Oh, Bob. You know.
Right, yeah.
But it's, you know, the system set up, it's difficult.
And we've discussed in the past, that's, that's also a really good way with the budget plan when you're looking at fund balances to say, okay, what's the future capital needs? And you know, okay, we gotta build up a fund balance because we have a major purchase in two, three years we gotta save up for, so. Or, hey, we just, we need to spend this money now, but there's nothing due, so we can take it down a little below maybe level because we're okay.
But actually, we're just doing that to buy, just doing the work for the council.
Exactly.
As a guideline. And then they do whatever the heck they want to do with that.
Yep.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's just the way it works, right?
That is, yeah, you're correct.
The council absolutely is, it has to do with the budget.
Absolutely, no, okay.
But the capital improvement plan helps them be able to do intelligent budget.
If we hang on to nothing.
So, is there, out of the budget that the village has, what of that is allotted for roads a year?
We are currently putting that together.
Okay.
Because if, what I wanna put together is, we have a separate fund right now for roads, but it's simply the Act 51 money and the road funds. But we don't have, in my opinion, what's called a, a capital improvement plan for roads. So, what we have to do is that, we've gotta do that in the, in my mind, in the budget. As we go forward, we will take and like, like for an example, you see on here our dump, this is the, the couple, three years out here, this $63,000 dump truck. That's, that is the snow truck for the village that will need to be replaced probably in two or three years. You know, we'll do our bale and wire and keep it together type thing. And the interesting thing is as we put together the budget, you have a capital equipment fund budget to where I put $20,000 away this year, $20,000 away the next year. Then the third year, I got $40,000 there and I only got a chip, when I had 20 in to buy the truck. You know, that's the way I'd like to see it done. There's other ways to do it obviously too, where Bob could probably tell you, you know, if you're buying a million-dollar fire truck, sometimes you buy that over 20 years and you pay the man, you go out and finance it. And so, you gotta set aside, you know, your $500 a month or whatever it is to make your fire truck payment, you know.
Okay, so.
I used to make one payment a year.
Yeah.
Let the township hang on to the money for the whole year, invest it and whatever, and then pay the bill at the end of the year for that year's billing.
There's different ways to do it, but, you know, we have to, we have to, in my opinion, just, we have to start setting, I would prefer to set money aside versus, you know, write one big check every time, you know, because it's.
So, in answer to his, when he asked about the roads and he said, we're working at it, so what are, what is this then? That you pay us?
That's, that's basically based upon the, what we, what Bob and I did is went through and said, okay, based on his rating of the roads, which roads should be done first, you know, in order to.
So, are these numbers you have placed in here, are these correct numbers or no?
There are, there are, we're working at it.
How often?
Those are, those are ballpark type figures based on what we've done currently on stuff.
Okay.
And June is the budgeting workshop, so it's not that far off to have an idea of what's planned and.
Like I say, we put together our.
Sorry, we're listening to music.
Capital improvement plan, but we all know, something comes up, you go, hey, village council goes, we're gonna take this money over here that was allocated and we need it right away and we're gonna move it over here and use it.
So, you just amend the plan?
Yep.
I mean, it's simple, I mean, it isn't a big deal.
It's a guideline, it's a living document, it's not a rule, you know.
And did you see in the paper today, there was something about Oakland County having a grant for roads for municipalities and villages? If you submitted, you haven't heard nothing on it?
No, no, it's probably the one we submitted, local, we submitted already. Last year, we got, I think it was $2,700 to go around crack sealing the roads and this year, they boosted us up to $4,600, so we matched that, it's a 50/50.
Same to me, the number wasn't a lot.
The commission got the $7 million. That's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, they got that extra $7 million this year and that's what I think you're talking about.
Yeah, I think so.
When you spread it all out, it's like, no.
Two dollars.
Yeah, it was to divide it all to different municipalities, that's for sure.
We got about, if it's the same one, we got close to $5,000 this year.
But that's where, that's where the evaluation they've done on the streets and roads really helps because they can identify, okay, which roads can we maybe extend the useful life on it by doing crack sealing? Which ones are, is it, they're beyond crack sealing and we don't wanna waste money on it because they just are not gonna be benefit from it. Because, you know, that way, if we can extend the life on some roads and then address the ones that are in poor shape, it's, it's all juggling act trying to figure out, you know, where to put Band-Aids and where do we just replace.
So, the biggest thing that helps this is, once you put the capital improvement plan in place, then you can go after, start going after grants and stuff like that to try to stretch your dollars, you know. You know, the biggest thing, one of the biggest things that we're gonna have to work on that I was encouraged to see the joint groups point out was drains. You know, a lot of times it don't do, excuse the expression, it held a lot of good. If, if you don't fix the, if you don't fix the drain, you can put a new road on it and the new road's gonna be gone in two or three years, you know. So, you gotta make sure you got the proper drainage and that. So, we may have to in some cases rethink our priorities a little bit to make sure that we got the proper infrastructure in place before we put the road in.
Absolutely.
You know.
But this is where, you know, having those priorities will help too because then if we do get some extra grant money that we weren't anticipating, we might be able to pull ahead projects and then we can grab the ones that are highest priority properties to pull ahead, you know, where the money comes.
Like the one grant we had that we applied for on Edwards and Davis Street, we didn't get the scrap tire grant this year, so that, we, we've got all the information we need to do it. So, we'll resubmit next year for that grant. Won't cost us anymore because Row's already done the work. But, simply put, they said, who was that, M, was that M dot? Or M E D Q, this is scrap tire.
D E Q.
D E Q. They're just got this rule that they're not doing places three years in a row. So, we would've got three years in a row, so us and Attica or Elmont was another one that, you know, so.
Okay. Anything else?
So, there's nothing else we have to collect at this point for the CPI or?
CIP just, if you guys got other projects, you know, and part of what I'd like to see in the, you know, the visioning set, ideally, you like to do the CIP and the budget at the same time. This time, we're not gonna be able to because we gotta, we haven't done it before. So, we gotta first set up the budget and then we'll, which I'm working on with Beth. And then we'll be able to get in a rhythm of doing this every, rethinking this every March or whatever. I'd like to start it in like March and have it done well before. Because I don't like doing budgets like in June. That's not the time to do it.
Okay, so, I, I would, I have a suggestion, since you mentioned Row has a spreadsheet or something like that, we could insert that as sheet two on our sheet and then we could have that as a priority page. We can have this as the top page, have sheet two being the prioritization page where we just plug our projects into that and then we'll have their criteria and stuff. If you get that, if you can get that to us with maybe two weeks in advance of our next planning commission meeting, do you think everybody, that you might be able to go through that and fill that out so we can have those priorities and things set and maybe be able to discuss them in the May meeting? Think that's doable?
Yeah, I think it is. And if you do got any additional projects, just shoot them to me.
Okay.
Okay?
So, I'm not sure about, because I have like this list of wish list things that I wanna bring up throughout the process of the master plan. I wouldn't even know how to put a number on it yet. So, that's, I mean, stuff will come down the pipe too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a living document.
Yes, so, yeah.
You're good.
Well, I think, I think it's important.
You see my wish list?
First one to hit all at once because then every year, it's a piece of cake after that because you gotta, you gotta manage all of this.
Are you in a hurry?
Yeah. My handwriting seems a little. You know, it's, it's kind of similar to what my company does. We have IT projects and everybody comes with our whole list of IT projects that goes in front of a review board. They kind of review them, look at various criteria, rank them by priority. And then they start top to bottom, there's dollar amounts associated, they have so much budget, they start going through and when they run out of money for the year, that's where they cut the line off the projects that year. The next year, the ones that didn't make it start up in top, more projects come in and it's just, every year gets reviewed and updated. I expect that we'll do something kind of rather similar, except we're projecting five or something instead of just one.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, we'll move on.
Okay, okay.
Discussion items from village manager. How could the planning commission be better informed in reference to new businesses?
This is forming, right? And that's what you wanna know. So, what we're gonna do and what, what are you gonna do, kid?
I wonder if I read out the ordinance, what could be done?
No.
You don't wanna know what the ordinance says? We didn't ask you about this before you brought it up.
Ever see the movie, what is it, Treasury of the Sierra Madre?
No.
Where the, you know, the famous line, the famous line in the movie where, badges, we don't need no stinking badges.
That was in that movie? I've heard that line.
Books.
We don't need no stinking books.
I thought that was for Blazing Saddles personally.
No.
We don't need no stinking badges.
Yeah.
They probably stole it from me.
So, we're, we're gonna come up, one of the things that we wanna do is come up with a, a list of new businesses that come in. We would like to know when they come in too, because we've had two come in recently.
One has come in, just so.
Just, we had.
Impact Nerf and a little.
No, wait, go ahead.
Little.
Little things.
Little things, right, I bought candy today, little things. And then Flo's Place, but Flo's Place.
What is Flo's Place?
It's a dry cleaning.
They moved around.
Very good.
They do tailoring.
Yeah, there was just a grand.
Interest modification, they do dry cleaning. They were down at the.
There was a grand.
They were in M 15.
They, little things.
Then they ran at the Dust.
Okay.
Were they?
So, how do you guys find out? Because we find out about it like just, yeah, what, yeah.
What's supposed to happen is they're supposed to come in and basically tell us.
Right.
Register the business and ask for, to see if they need a certificate of occupancy and stuff. And most of landlords, I think, in the village would hope, we hope they know that, so.
So, do the cracks come in every time someone's moving in one of their building?
I talk to them usually.
Okay, so then when you talk to them, then it's not getting here then? That's where it kind of stops?
That's not true.
Okay.
Totally.
Okay, so, what's the process?
I wanna read out the ordinance, what's required and then if there's something more that you wanna do, then you can do more.
Cool, okay.
But what it says here, a person seeking occupancy in connection with a proposed change of use. That means a building is used for retail. If a person moves out and another retail moves in, that's not a change of use, that's just a new business. And I think that's more of what Bill was referring to.
Yeah.
That we wanna compile that information to get it for you.
Yeah.
Where a building permit is not required, it should make all submissions to the village required under the paragraphs here of the preceding page. Upon receipt of this information, it should be reviewed to determine if the proposed use sign, et cetera, conformed to the ordinance. Now, if it is a change of use, that's the planning commission's issue. It will be brought to you as a change of use and then you approve or not approve it, okay?
Okay.
But if it's a, if it's an existing use of a structure, all it's required to have is a fire inspection, a building inspection, just to make sure it complies with those issues. And for the most part, we're getting that as best we can. Some, sometimes they don't even come and ask, they just move in. Flo just moved in.
Really?
Okay, yeah. So, but then there's also the part where if they are required to get a building permit, then it follows the same site plan approval process. However, remember a year or so ago.
Oh, yeah, we gave you approval.
Yeah, we allowed for administrative approval.
Right.
And then you get notified at the next meeting when that happened.
For example, Bill, you put a wheelchair ramp on a business in town. We never got a report on that.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
So, yeah.
You should, as soon as I approve it, you will.
Oh.
It's there on my desk, it's ready for that.
While I have that certification.
But that's a minor project. That one didn't really affect anybody and.
We just wanna be aware.
Because of the ADA rules now, and it's, and it's not necessarily, I mean, the building code requires that there was not a change of use, therefore, he wasn't required to do it for that, but he was required to make the building very, very accessible because of the ADA requirements. So, I mean, I could've brought that to you and said, you guys said yes or no, but either way, he's gotta have it.
No, but all we're saying is.
More of a courtesy.
Send us a report every month so we know what, what activities happened.
So, that's what, that's what we're trying to get the kind of a central report put together like for the village and the buildings, occupancy permits, that kind of thing. Send it out to all three groups, because it's not only your group, obviously. The village council wants to know and the DDA wants to know because the DDA has all sorts of programs and stuff that.
Can help these people.
Can help these people that, you know, we wanna, we wanna see them be successful. So, that's one of the things that we're trying to pull together here is a.
A monthly report.
That would be great, because we need to be ambassadors for the businesses that come in and if we don't know about them, it's hard to do that. All right, so Bill, when like Flo's Place just moved in, so what?
I'll be over to talk to her tomorrow.
I mean, like what, yeah, what?
This is not anything new for her. I had to do this in Brandon.
Okay.
She just showed up there too.
Okay, so what, do you just go there and say, no, these are. Okay, so what, do you just go there and say, eh, no, these are the steps?
This is what we gotta do. You gotta have a safety in.
Wanna know how we found out?
Yeah, I'm curious. Okay.
They called, they called to let me know that my alteration was ready, but that they had moved.
Oh, goodness.
They had, and they called my cell phone. They had no idea.
And we have a new address? Okay.
And then when they did move, they didn't have any signs, because Liz said something to me and I went looking for it and I couldn't figure out where it was. Well, come to find out, it's in that building where the church used to be. And she still doesn't have a sign out front, but she does have apparently one on the window that says she's open. And I noticed today, I think it was, she's got a, what do you call the?
A sandwich.
A sandwich board sign out there.
Yeah, a sandwich board sign.
Yeah, so I'll go over talking to her and we'll get her set straight with what the rules are. Typically, what happens when we do know these things, I get a hold of Chief Quappus and him and I go together on these.
Gotcha.
So, we work in conjunction and, um, sometimes if there's something he has or I have, but they typically overlap each other, exit lights, you know, keying operations, getting the max boxes in and the keys, getting fire extinguishers, you know, all the safety type of things. Quite often, if there's a follow-up, either him or I'll go do the follow-up. We, we trust each other to get that done. So, uh, we're trying to work with businesses, but unless it's a change of use though, it won't come to you first.
No, we just want like more or less a courtesy.
What's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
And that'll be primarily for business. Because single family, single family housing is specifically left out of your procedure in the book. And you don't care about, although we do have one new house permit coming, so.
Oh.
Or is there a grace involved?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're saying, I seen like construction activity in the lower level of the doctor's office, like where they were putting walls in or something like that. Do you know?
Remember you went and tried to peek in the window and it was blacked out. You couldn't see anything?
Oh, that one? Yeah. No, that's Winter's building, right?
Yeah, that's what he's talking about.
Oh, he, he's cleaned out the main floor, but he's got other issues than Bill. He's got septic issues that he's gonna have a lot of, he's got a lot to do. I've gotten letters from the health department that.
Okay.
They're not approving anything over there at the current rate.
In other, he's moving forward without approval on anything.
He emptied, he cleaned it out. He hasn't really built anything, as best I know.
Who's he?
He's Mr. Winter. He's the owner.
All I know is one day I drove by there and the guy's got a truckload of two-by-four studs and material he's putting in there.
I went over the look and the windows are all blacked out, so I can't see inside. I can't trespass to get this done. I mean, but, um, whatever he does, he's gonna have to make it inspectable at a later date, so.
Oh, good. You know, actually, it's interesting you mention about trespassing to check on things. I had to stop the other day, because it's like, well, we can't just walk on people's properties. But I was wondering, what are the rules and guidelines regarding airspace like drones?
Oh, I use Google Earth all the time. Are you kidding me? That's my favorite source.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean.
Google, Google Earth is a public, um, avenue.
But I mean, if the village had a drone.
Yeah, drones have not been proven through the court system to be a viable way of gaining information, because that could be trespassing. It hasn't been proved through the court.
I was just curious.
But Google Earth being a generally accepted overview, I use it all the time, especially in the township. I find stuff all over the place over there and Google Earth is awesome. And I've actually used it for one of the court cases through the township. The township attorney had said, cool, bring the pictures in. So, uh, now pictometry through the assessing program is even got clearer pictures. I mean, very clear.
And current too?
Huh?
And current?
Uh, yeah, a little better than Google Earth. They, they take, they take turns providing their information, but, Google Earth now has got a lot of street views, which is pretty cool, so.
Okay.
You go right down into the woods.
I know.
Yeah, all the hunting spots, you go right down into the woods.
Oh, yeah.
Melanie, item two, new business signs, awnings, et cetera.
Oh, I, I attended, uh, one of the DDA's meeting and the new business that was coming in, um, they were going over different awnings that they were gonna have, what color and what size and what will be on it or not on it. And I was, I just want to be able, especially since we're doing the master plan, um, all of us just to kind of be on the same page or at least know about it. Because when the awnings or fronts or whatever go up and if we're doing this master plan, thinking this and this and then DDA is doing, and business people are doing another thing, how can we get that? And then the other thing was at the council meeting, they were talking about the signs for the village park over there.
And the entrances.
Thank you, for the entrances. And, and it was mentioned by someone that, um, maybe they'll have a contest to design signs or maybe they all have their ideas of what they wanna have. Being planning commission, should we not be part of what the signs will be like?
Well.
And wouldn't that be dictated kind of in the master plan? Same with awnings and storefronts and whatnot?
Bill, maybe you can clarify, because I, I, the last time we did the master plan, I was on the planning commission and worked on that process. And I know part of what we were trying to do is get away from use based towards form based. And I think form based does help us to get a better control on awnings and signage and stuff like that, to have consistency within the community. We, uh, subsequent to that, we did do a rewrite of the zoning ordinances. Um, so are the new zoning ordinance, or I should say our current zoning ordinances, are they more form based? So that we can.
No, they never got to that point.
We didn't get that?
No.
Okay.
We modified some things that really needed to be modified because they either didn't make sense or.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I, I think that's.
They had bigger signs allowed for slower speed limits, which me just didn't compute in my mind.
But I think that's one of the things that we wanna do in, in our zoning. If we didn't get all the way towards form based, I think that that's maybe this iteration of the master plan. We should also revisit the zoning ordinance again and see if we can get further that direction.
Typically what happens, when you get a master plan in place, then you go back and you modify the zoning ordinance.
And that's what we did, that's what we did last time. And I thought we were moving in the direction of, I thought we were moving in the direction of more form based, but if we're not there yet, I think we should definitely revisit that once we get the new master plan in place.
That was discussion, but I think it was, because the last time it was approved, it was pretty much, there's no changes. You guys just reaproved it as it was.
Yeah, but when it was gone back in, what was it, 2008? Yeah. After that, we did do a redo of the zoning ordinances after that, so.
Those were in 11, I think was the last.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just before my time.
And I know that there was significant rewrite of those ordinances at that point.
This was before my time. But what I'm saying is typically what you do is after your master plan gets approved, then you go back and implement it within your zoning ordinances to see that it all flows and fits. That I, I was gonna bring this up, but I thought I would wait until the master plan is done, is this sign ordinance is terrible. I mean, really, it, I don't think it achieves what you're really looking for. It, it's missing in many areas, um, in my mind. It just doesn't do what a sign ordinance should do and, um.
That would be something council would have to do, the ordinance, correct?
No, no.
If it's zoning, that's.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Well, I should re-clarify what I just said. The zoning ordinance is adopted or is reviewed by and is public hearing by the planning commission. But any ordinance that changes is the council's authority to change.
Yeah.
But typically the, uh, well, not typically, what the zoning enabling act says is your planning commission does all that footwork and does all the public hearings for it and then makes a recommendation to council for council to actually change the ordinance.
Well, you would hope it would do that kinda process. We haven't been successful with that yet.
Well, I think, no, but the codified ordinance or the regular general duty ordinance is whatever you wanna call, they come strictly out of the, there's not a public hearing request for that.
Right.
Those are, those are optional if they want to use the planning commission as a resource.
They can use them for a resource, but those, you know, those like are driven out of the council, for lack of a better term. There is, there is, uh, no, like our, like our, excuse, the chicken ordinance, you still have based upon general law, you have to post that for 30 days and before it can become effective versus when you do a zoning ordinance, it was at two weeks prior to the public hearing. You gotta publish and you gotta mailing requirements and you had all sorts of other stuff.
And that could've been, either way, it could've been zoning, it could've been general ordinance. They chose to do general. Um, regarding Melanie's question about the awnings stuff, if we eventually get to form based, you know, a more of a true form based zoning ordinances, would that pretty much address her concerns about what?
Yeah, but there's other issues relative to signs that have been, um, actually made it through the Supreme Court that we probably need to address and that is, um, not message based, but deal with strictly the signs themselves, size, what they are, what they do. The, the Supreme Court in a case probably two, maybe was it two, three years ago now, I think? There was a church that had all them little signs out the road that says, we have church today. It was a temporary sign, albeit far from my imagination, the church would actually go to the ACLU for help on something. But they did and they took it to the Supreme Court. Well, it was, it was, um, gosh, I wish I can remember. It was a church versus a city, because the city wrote them violations for having all these signs out there because they couldn't, but yet real estate signs are all over the place and they're allowed.
Right.
Okay, so here's the story. It was content based, the decision that was made and what the Supreme Court has said is, you can't do that. If you have temporary signs, it covers political signs, it covers real estate signs, it covers.
Or sales signs.
First, yeah, all that.
Any message.
Any message.
Yeah.
You just have to deal with it as a temporary sign, no matter what it says. So, I, I think if the sign ordinance gets opened, I, I would like to see that be taken care of at the same time.
And do you have, in addition to that, some other recommendations regarding that particular area for us that maybe you could send to us?
Well, I wanna wait until after the master plan's been dealt with.
Do, okay, all right.
Because, yeah, because I think the master plan really should drive the zoning ordinance, not the other way around.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I mean, if, if our master plan says, we wanna have Vegas downtown, it's gonna have a completely different sign ordinance as opposed to we wanna have, you know, Green Acres downtown.
And what I've done, and so far it's gone very well, is I've actually, the businesses that have come in for signs, especially in the downtown district, had lengthy conversations on getting them to do projection signs because that's really the flavor and character of a historic district. If you look at all the older signs, they were hanging out from the building.
Yeah.
You know, there weren't plaster on the wall, there weren't backlit. That's not historic.
Yeah.
Okay, and I deal with another village that has an actually historic district, okay? So, I, I get what that's all about. Um, so they, and they've been really good about wanting to do that. So, so far, I've been able to have the discussions and achieve that, but I'm sure there'll be a day where that ain't gonna happen, but.
So, is that, what do you think, Bill? Is this something that, like when DDA is going through their, I don't know, for the audience, for example, is that something, do you think that should be discussed at all with planning commission? Or what, what's the feel here?
As long as it, as long as it fits the current zoning or planning or whatever that you got, that is their decision to make.
Okay.
You know, if it's something that later gets modified or something, then it might, I, I think that it would be nice if, and we were just talking about that, is, is kinda closing the loop between DDA. That's part of what we're trying to.
Communication, yeah.
We're trying to get this whole communication thing going. DDA meetings are gonna be taped, you know? But we're sharing minutes across each other and stuff like that to sort of make sure that everybody has a copy of everything. Hopefully, we can get a lot more interaction going, a lot more joint meetings and stuff going that.
Yeah, that would, that would be great.
And I will, I'll echo by our, our Bill's, uh, some of what Bill's saying there, but I had a smart guy tell me one time that there are three things in city or municipal government that you wanna tread lightly on when you start making changes and stuff. The first of those is taxes. The second one is pets of any way, shape, form, or whatever.
Very emotional connected.
And the third is, believe it or not, signs.
Signs.
And it is, we have had businesses pull out of town.
Because they could, yeah.
Because people tried to force a zoning sign on them. And we've had up, up there, major chains threaten not to come in because part of their trademark is.
Their brand, yeah.
Their brand is that sign. And so, they've said.
Like Meyer is a Meyer.
They say crap, hey, they say we don't care what sign we put up. Davison don't care what sign we put up. We'll go there.
On the other hand, I've seen some of those same big chains. If it's a really desirable place, they would inform just to get them in that spot. So, it's more if they, if it's, if they have a choice and they don't like her, they can move out. But if they really wanna be there, they'll be there.
I think it's worth it to note too, just for everybody's comfortable, that your DDA is very master plan driven.
Right.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I, I wanna, I wanna see us working closely. I really do. Yeah, so, I don't know. I'm, I'm trying to attend more of the meetings just to know what's happening, especially now, you know?
But do we get their minutes?
I think I provide them to you tonight.
We did. We got, we got it this time.
Speaking of that, can I, can I make a suggestion? Maybe that would be something that we should add a, one more agenda item after approval of minutes, is maybe receiving of minutes. So that we can formally like.
Say we've received them?
Receive each of the different meeting and kinda note what meetings.
Kind of like a transmittal or something?
Yeah, we used to do that at the village council. We would have approval of our minutes and we also have receipt of minutes where we would get minutes from, you know, township or fire department, things like that. And, and we actually had a line item in there that was received.
We call them, we call them material transmittals or whatever.
Oh, goodness. Goodness.
Or distribution items or whatever, whatever you wanna call it. But I mean, do you think that that would be a good idea to have, add a line where we formally, you know, can receive these various minutes and say, okay, we got this one, this one, this one, this one?
Sure. Something else to do.
Yeah.
Well, that way we also, we can, that way we will also have it recorded when, when we got what meeting minutes and stuff at our meetings and stuff too. So, we actually have that record and say, we got these. And if the village was doing the same, then the village would have it and they're saying, oh, yeah, we got planning commission meetings on this date from, from that.
Okay. I think we're done. I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
We received a memo with three things on it to do at this meeting. We've done none of them. Is that fine?
Which, which three did we consider?
I keep saying, we, this was our main meeting from Mike. We have done none of them.
Because we had more questions from Mike than we had answers.
Go back to that.
We haven't given them, we haven't given them a complete.
Three questions and three things.
We haven't given a, a complete list of stakeholders and that's what he has to do to be in.
Right.
We haven't done that yet. I just got the list of businesses.
But it says, as soon as you have a complete list forwarded to us, not, you know, do we need two weeks? Do we have? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is this was to be done at the meeting and we didn't do any of it. So, now we're another month out and another month out and.
The goal priorities, we said we would all complete that and return it to Liz by the end of the week, right?
Right.
Stakeholder interviews, we're completing the list and going to be getting that.
Getting that tonight.
Right.
But we weren't, it wasn't complete.
Well, like I said, it says at the meeting. I guess I thought we were working on the first one together and the, the third one. I don't, that's fine. I'm just throwing it out there that I guess where is the end results of these three items?
And Lee, you were gonna clarify with Mike what he needs for the visioning session and then communicate that back out to us? That's.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I believe.
Okay.
So, there's no date set for the next meeting. Nobody's gonna set a date and that's not gonna be done for, to give to Mike.
The visioning session?
I, I think the visioning session, we wouldn't be able to have before, at least sometime in May anyway, so. Because we still have to get, well, okay, sometime in June, I guess at this point. That's right, it is May.
And keep in mind that June is a very busy month as far as budgets.
Budgets and whatnot.
That's what I'm saying. We need to, just need to be done in May.
If it, no, I, see, I don't agree with that. I think if it, however long this will take us is however long it takes us to do it right.
Yeah, I'd really do it right and take a little longer to do it right, then try to rush some fingers.
But we have that. We have the addresses from all of the residents, all of the tax holders and. But we have that. We have the addresses from all of the residents, all of the tax holders and all of the business holders.
Mike doesn't have it yet.
Once they're gathered, they go to Mike and that's it.
Correct. But we haven't done that part yet, because we've just now got that, I just now got this.
And so they'll have that and we'll be done this week.
Nope, Mike, he's gonna talk to Mike tomorrow. Mike wants us to make a meeting. Why can't we have a second meeting?
What, can we do it in an email?
Setting up a meeting?
It's a different way.
Why can't we do an email?
You can set up a meeting.
I mean.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we need to send out email stuff.
I mean, dates for meetings.
When you, when you were on the village council, do you, just because you have an agenda and he's got these items listed on there, when you don't know all the information, you're gonna make a decision on it without having all the information in hand? I don't understand that.
I see, I, when I was on council, I would have preferred to table something until we had all the information, rather than just act without, you know, having.
Say, well, we gotta, we have to.
But I hear that some people on the council tend to do it the other way around, where they're people of action and they want to do stuff now, even if they don't have all the information. So, I mean, it just depends on your approach, I suppose.
Like I said, I feel that information is gathered and it's right here and now we just need to plan a meeting for that information for him to give it back to us. That's, that's, that is just first looking, so that's fine. We're good.
So, in, in particular, you're talking about particular what item, the third item?
The three items that we got from.
The picking day for the sessioning?
The visiting, visioning session.
He's looking for two dates for you guys, when you want your mailing to go out.
Don't we have to discuss?
When you want your visioning session to be.
Yeah, well, I know we had talked about doing that in the tax bill, but then Bill brought some attention, some new information that not everybody gets tax bills.
So that's why he was gonna talk to Mike.
Then, then we gotta rethink, okay, how are we gonna make sure? I, I kind of like the idea, um, that was suggested, the joint meeting about, you know, the little like postcard things that can go out. Uh, and if we have a list of all the residences, and, and I think it'd be better if, rather than being addressed to resident, if we actually had people's, you know, address to them by name.
And not send out a card to say we're sending out something later. That's a waste of money and time, I'm sorry.
I didn't understand that one, but hey.
Jack got something in the mail saying that he's gonna be receiving a bill. He's like, why didn't they just send me a bill? And I'm like, yeah, well, you're a teenager, you got that figured out, so there you go.
Yeah, but the council's dipper, differs on that, I know. But we could have another meeting in two weeks if Mike's running.
Do you think we have enough information to set dates tonight?
No, because I sent him a mail, so that's fine. I just, yeah, I just, I usually like, I would think if you had questions, you would email them and they would be addressed before the meeting, so we would have the information gathered for the meeting and then we could have addressed it, but that's okay. I just, Liz asked me questions. He knows, said to do it at the main meeting, that's what his note said to do. So that's what I thought we were doing, but that's fine. So we'll do, we'll bring it up, turn it on all the time. Good.
So, anything else? If not, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.